What now what are we gonna do and it is cuz the young kids they're where am I I'm gonna I believe this they're where the grownups take them or where they ensure they get.
Madam Chairman.
Yes ma'am.
May I just have a dialogue with you?
Yes, that's why you missed.
It's been a long time and back in the day Jim and I served for a little while together as principals and I was looking around the room to see if it if there was someone I think Ms. Neal might have been um but there the campaign I would support 100% but it's gonna take more than just a campaign let me tell you something as a Duval principal and I was very rarely at my house with my own children because the BRT the CRT we had them back then the reading we didn't have coaches the reading specialist and myself we went door to door to door and I know principals if I said that at the principals meeting coming up they'd probably look at me cross eyed but that's what it's going to take truant officers are not going to be the people you've got to go sit on the porch you've got to go sit in the garage in their kitchen at their kitchen table that is what I'm telling you and as the superintendent said some of the parents have different working hours guess what my homeschool liaison and I we sat at the door until they came and my family thought I was crazy but I was determined that we were going to have 100% attendance we didn't have the computers and the iPhones and all of this stuff back in the day so we had to make that contact and it's going to be on the principals am I right mister Jim I'm not gonna say Kune I'm gonna just say Jim because that's what it took Ms. Black worked with me at Duval and now she's not she knows what we had to do and the same parents that we're facing now and I cannot believe I'd I'd love to just come and look at the administrators faces and say guess what you're gonna have to do period Ms. Johnson can send out a million emails we can have our websites beautifully done Alachua Chronicle Main Street Gainesville Sun can put it all out but unless you touch that individual and say guess what I'm looking in your face and if you don't do this this and this your child will not move on that makes a difference when they can see it hear it from the people in charge that's all I wanted to tell you.
So thank you Dr. McNeely I don't think we disagree when I say campaign I think you I think you may misunderstood what I'm saying and I'm.
I understand exactly what you mean that we must unify come together say the same thing the same time but it's gonna take more.
But I'm talking about touching people as well and I'm thinking of.
But you didn't say it that way you got to say it Ms. Surtin say I expect the administrators the I don't they don't have homeschool liaisons anymore and those kinds of things but it must it's gonna be left to the administrator to handle it period.
But so but Dr. McNeely so but for the three of us or the five of us three of us here I'm not I'm not excluding my colleagues online but.
Sure.
We can't direct principals we have to align and that has to be.
I'm telling the person who can direct.
No but we the three the the board has to agree that this is an initiative we wanna give to to our superintendent so I didn't want it to be a focus or something that I'm wanting that's why I think we move forward as an organization when the board is cohesive when the board says we want something and when 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 our superintendent and the staff and those know I think that's what I meant I mean I'm not gonna say every single step but I do I agree with you we've got to make contact with parents and we've got to use a lot of different modalities some people you can send them you can call them they're gonna answer the phone some people they will answer email.
It's gonna take more than that.
No no I'm saying but because and then some people you gotta go sit on their doorstep but I was the type of parent you call me and tell me my kid wasn't in school I'm I'm figuring out why there are other people that that's not so that's what I mean when I'm saying we've got to get everybody kinda coordinated and aligned and things that may have been done half-heartedly or not done at all in the past we flush those out but that's gonna be something that's not gonna be with us I'm willing to help like I told Ms. Robbins and I've told Dr. O if they go out and they they're walking the neighborhood and they want some fee I'll come and help and do that cuz I have done that.
I'm not gonna walk I'm not gonna bring out my role later but I'm telling and saying to everybody in here heard me and when they get with the leadership with this wonderful lady here she's going to reemphasize what we're saying today but mean it and then the team come out of these offices and see or maybe help walk with the staff of each school and get the parent that I mean I don't I don't I don't see.
And it's also propping him up I just watched Leroy Williams we were at Bishop the other day in the hallways we were.
You mean that?
No we were at Bishop doing the rigor walks and there was a parent that he had who was an employee by the way interesting so we're trying to move on we're like we lost Leroy so we wait for him at the elevator and um he says well that's one of our parents I'm like hey cuz he took the opportunity that's one of his missing kids her answer to him was I can't make her go to school so it's not just even talking to parents giving them sets of strategies like that there's our employee who's telling the principal of the school she can't get her kid to come to school not a good sign so also it's about educating our own people how to help that that's an example that's our own staff member who needs to be helped as to what strategies to get her daughter into school.
Let's play that.
So. Just happened last week.
So as a teacher at Gainesville High School um I remember Mr. Shalnat always said that um we are a community within a high school so or any school you are and it's the leadership and I've always been told by the superintendent that the principal runs the schools well the principals do have a lot on their plate but Ms. Ritter knows that we have a huge amount of networking within a principal's let's say within a high school let's take a high school that has all these CTE programs so if you tell the CTE director hey Janine what's going on at AHP how many kids are out this week we have a relationship all especially in career technical we have a relationship with our students and our families so that's one aspect that we can help principals to track students and every school elementary middle and high has CTE programs and it's not that's a large component of our school system is our CTE so we have personal relationships I think that if I believe that every teacher principal wants their children those children to be at school but how do you make that happen you make it with relationships you make it with connections and so if you use those connections that we have like when Mr. Shepherd was at Newberry and he's got Patrick Treese who's in criminal justice and he's got the culinary you still have the culinary program over there so those you you're taking a large component out of the mix that the executive secretary might have to call or the dean might have to call and then those people can delegate to others to help so I totally agree that attendance is so important because within our academies also if you don't attend you don't go to competitions you don't you don't participate but that's what makes it so important to be in school is to have that relationship so I agree with Dr. McNeely that you have to have the relationship but I think we can also utilize what we have within our school system and not make it another thing on the principal's plate it's the principals are great at delegating but if they delegate to people that have the buy-in like our CTE programs and other programs within our schools this really is where you get those relationships I will I would say that CTE programs probably have the least amount of absences than anybody in the school system Ms. Ritter wouldn't you say that?
I don't actually have that data but my instinct would be yes.
Yes.
For the same reason but I would say the same thing about relationships with the football coach.
Right.
The man director.
Exactly.
It's always those relationships.
Kids that don't have the hook is where we have to really.
But but we can use those people to help that so instead of like.
Each one take one.
Right.
Four or three people.
It's not a hard thing it's just I understand it's another thing but if kids aren't in school like Ms. Surtin said then they're not gonna get past that third grade or they're not gonna pass and we all know as you get into high school all these kids that are coming into high school level ones how do they feel they they feel horrible that they can't even understand that teacher in that classroom and now they're acting out or they're trying to cover up what they don't know and now they got four years in this high school and how's that gonna be so I I really appreciate the data but I also know that we do have to do whatever we can do to try to get these kids in school and we can advertise all we want but we need to have the relationships built and I think that we can all agree on that.
You know what the reason why I say I think is some communications also is I've had parents say well they just in first grade or whatever it don't it doesn't make that much of a difference they've actually said that when I and then when I say but look it's so foundational right and if you and they go oh and they only miss so many days and I show them the chart Kuhn used to put the little slide up and I take the picture of it that had the attendance at Ottawa by grade level and the tardies and when they see that the parents see that it is really jarring and.
I think it's our high school where the absence is it's kindergarten it's our highest misthing that's their foundational year.
So yeah so I'm I'm I was harped on the on the attendance and I think um and I asked several questions um on the slides about attendance I asked if the VPK students were coming cuz our youngest kids that I know when I've talked with the VPK staff they said the kids have to attend 85% of the time to get funding so that was where my question was leading I didn't wanna know about if we had enough folks to cover the class I wanna know did we have these students that were coming that they came 85% it was only 15 days but so I'm hoping that they did and if they didn't that y'all having a conversation with them because these are if they missing a VPK likely that kindergarten we don't want them to bring those same habits so we kinda gotta start like telling them now hey I noticed that they're out and if we get some root cause why why are you out I mean it I know people are busy and one more thing and it may not wanna but we gotta ask the question because some people will never ask the question is it childcare are you keeping the kid home an older kid home to watch a younger kid is a student sick is it transportation I mean a lot of we have a lot of unhoused people that are like sharing housing and they may be drifting around so they could possibly qualify for McKinney Vento and they be but we won't ever know that if we don't ever ask these questions if we're just collecting data and giving it to the board that's um so and I had asked for the on slide five the KPI by site and. And how many how many students are in the class at the VPK at Duval into Williger how many?
How many for the um VPK regular program the.
Yeah.
Is 12 um that's all that's all we're allowed to have per class um I think they average seven to eight they had some start and some that did not finish but I can assure you with the VPK staff they were calling texting doing anything they could to make sure those students were there for VPK regular program for the bridge um there were 36 students district-wide that that qualified but only I believe 12 of those I have to look at my notes 12 of those were Alachua County Public Schools students actually five started and only three finished um its attendance isn't if it's not required we're required to have the program summer bridge that's a new requirement brought by the state and so we're required to invite any student in a VPK program in our county public and private um so we had 12 that qualified but I believe four of them were our students three or four were our students and then there was one that was from private school.
Okay so we're required to have it does the state just fund it outright or do they only fund it for just students that are there?
They fund they give you an amount for grant you you put in a grant basically saying how many you believe will be coming and we did that we had to put in the grant before we even knew how many were eligible but we went by how many we knew were eligible for our district we don't have any way of knowing how many are eligible in private providers they have to let us know we reach out we put the information to the private providers but we don't have access to their data but then they fund it based on that and then I believe after that if those don't attend the money is is sent back correct Ms. McLoney?
Yes and also when looking at our summer bridge program we do have to keep in mind it was only a four hour per day program so many families may not have or been able to get off work have childcare for half a day once they leave the summer bridge so that may have contributed to the low um attendance yes ma'am as well.
Yes.
No transportation.
Students were not also allowed to do the four hour summer bridge but then do the rest of the day regular VPK they weren't allowed to do that either so childcare was an issue and so and we couldn't extend it so it was a problem for that four hours and this is brand new and our attendance I don't know what the attendance is like statewide I'm curious to see because our participation um was low.
So we did this summer bridge at a site where we were having regular VPK is that what we did to kinda counteract the um negative implications of lack of attendance?
Yes we did it we did it at Du we'd had the summer bridge at Duval because we had classrooms set up and it was already a place where we had students that were our students that were eligible.
Already added in okay.
Yes.
All right that's I'm gonna I won't have as much heartburn about that okay on slide seven the third grade reading camp and um I I already asked my course I told you I didn't ask the the right the question the right way um you gave me the total number of students actually you didn't give me the total numbers maybe you did the total number of students by site.
The total number of students by site for?
For the third grade reading so for the spreadsheet that I have here if I was to add across on each line is that every is that a total like the horizontal for the row that would be the total that for each of those sites?
That were in attendance?
Yes.
No no the first column the one and I'm gonna make sure I'm on the right the right thing the first column tells you the number of retained students at the end of summer school the ca the second column is the number that was promoted for good cause if you add up the the third fourth and fifth column that would add up to the number that were promoted for good cause that's the number of students for ISIP AMIRA SAT 10 and that that should add up for um for the first for Alachua there were five students promoted for good cause and five of those were by SAT 10 then the last column is really the that's an additional number of students who promoted and it's not even a good cause the number of students that passed the July fast that's just a regular promotion and that is independent of those other numbers that's additional students we had 20 additional students after summer school ended that were promoted based on the July fast assessment.
All right.
And then we've had and like as I said we will we will give you the data for the number of students that were promoted since the beginning of school year I'm still collecting that um schools are still reporting that um but we've had some students who are promoted based on ISIP and some based on the PM one fast.
Okay so just for summer summer um I wanna know I think by school the number of students that were retained the number that came to summer school and you've already given us how they were promoted and if they were promoted.
Yes.
Or not or or not promoted so.
But the in the first column that the number that was retained at the end of the summer that is the number that were retained at the school.
No 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 is that total for the whole school not like cuz the.
Yes that yes that is total for the at the end of summer.
No what if they didn't what if they chose not to attend summer school that's what I'm trying to ask I wanna make sure.
This is by school even if they chose to not to attend summer school that was the total number of students who were retained at the ender.
Archer only had one student.
Yes.
Oh okay.
So these are the total number that were retained at the end of summer school regardless of whether they attended I wanted to know were they retained because some were retained at the end of the school year and they may remain retained so this is the number that were retained at those schools.
Okay number retained at the school okay.
And just to put it into perspective we had approximately 519 students who scored a level one and at the end of summer 334 of those students were promoted for good cause.
Why why does this?
And we've had some since then.
You said the end of the summer 300 or you you.
At the end at from the end of the school year and the end of summer school we've had 334 students that were promoted for good cause that got a level one some were promoted at the end of the regular school year because they qualified for good cause so that's a large percentage of students who scored a level one that have been promoted for good cause I believe we calculated it was 65% of the students who scored a one were promoted.
What's really puzzling I guess the reason I'm looking is like this spreadsheet doesn't reflect.
It it doesn't have.
And so that's why I was like wait where's that?
You have you have based on summer school cuz this is a summer school workshop and we told we did the numbers for summer school but we can tell you the numbers that were for the entire school year I mean for the based on the end of.
We had 519.
It should be 186 I'm correct.
I'm sorry.
So the number the number on the bottom of the spreadsheet says 186 total with all the school.
That were retained.
That would be the current number that were retained then?
Yes.
For the from the end of the school year regardless of summer or not.
Yes that should be the number that were retained.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what remain retained.
After all good cause and everything else.
Yes but that doesn't take into account the students who've already been promoted that were promoted since the beginning of school year 186 started the school year retained we've had several promoted and I will get that data for you.
Okay all right thank you for that and so on slide eight again this is one I didn't ask it correctly so you may have to um you'll have to give it get it to me um so how many the total number of students first and second grade that didn't meet grade level expectations?
I'm gonna defer to Ms. McLoney for that.
Oh do you have it okay.
I was gonna say that number I would have to get for you I don't have the specific number right now.
Okay all right.
Can you repeat that just to make sure I can write it down?
I was wanting to know the total number of current first and second grade students not meeting grade level expectations and so um oh we had so many worksheets and they didn't get the titles on them and I was asking for the sites um the number of students by site and the results by site and I'm thinking the sites that were not Title One was at Charles Hidden Oak Meadowbrook in Talbot?
Yes ma'am.
Okay and that was the one I had a question about was I um at the June first totals for first grade it had total students in that first column it totaled 99 for all the sites and then um July for first grade I it's only 40 students so I emailed it to you that Mr. Shalnat was I looking at that wrong?
No ma'am but that was the data that was.
So would would you go to the lecture cuz I wanna thank you so this is this this worksheet says summer ISIP data and um so is that for the kindergarten I'm sorry the Title One Extended School Year is that what this is right here?
Yes ma'am the STEAM program that would have been the number of students that were signed up at each of those four schools that were not Title One Schools and so that's the number of students that were in the program in June at those four schools and then the number that were in July and that paper separated by first grade I believe are the top two and second grade are the bottom two but there is a large discrepancy or that you mentioned there the number 40 um is a a large there was a difference between the number in June and July at those two schools.
So so they so they've no that so we had 50 students drop out?
N- no ma'am I I don't know specifically about the students individual students sometimes you also have to remember July there were only two days of summer school in July so I'm not sure if those students had passed one of the other test assessments the AMIRA ISIP first kind of going through therefore the number of students may have been a little bit lower in July.
So on this slide slide eight it says key performance indicators 100% of the students will show a scale score increase of five points on ISIP and the outcome was 58% of the students demonstrated a five point or greater scale score so I was wanting to know how many total students like percentages are okay but I really wanted to just see what the to how many kids we were serving and to see the performance and how they were that's why I was asking so when I saw this and it was like June first graders and it had the schools and it had the June second grader you know and then it had it for July the drop off between June and July we went from 99 total students from the sites to 40 that's a lot yeah yeah actually you wanna put this you can project it I will ask them with the um does the there's a Lady Bird camera working is it hooked up okay.
Is that what the link is that the document?
Yes.
Beautiful. I think I have some.
Okay well I that just that looks a little odd don't you don't think that looked odd to you?
I mean yes ma'am there was a difference and it was really primarily at two of the schools versus the uh four when I was looking before I thought that two of the four schools the numbers aren't quite as wide ranging.
Yeah I was thinking maybe the data set oh here would you here here's this um can I get this to you you can um project it thank you. I think it snaps does it okay I think it snaps doesn't it Ms? So Ms. McLoney I always look at all my stuff I'm sorry and I do try to submit my questions and stuff beforehand to you all before and so they're get while they're getting it I'm gonna go on um for number um page slide nine well let me see if I had anything else on the page seven. Well I I simply for some reason I didn't type out my I hadn't put my kindergarten questions there so I won't go and the STEM one I think that is related to that the STEAM stats is that it those are the same sites yeah.
Yes ma'am because like as Mr. Shalnat said you're really looking at Charles and Meadowbrook where you saw the um a great number of students that took the June assessment but did not take the July assessment and as Mr. Shalnat was saying when thinking about the instructional days within July it was only two days it was a you know leading up to 4th of July so that could have had you know a great deal to do with it if families have pre-planned vacations or different um things such as that.
And Madam Chair if I may a lot of those students also and I know I have the paper that you had previously you don't have in front of you but have you noticed there were students that had level fives fours and threes so if those were additional students that were there for the STEAM program cuz it was available that'd be maybe a different program than the third grade program um for students who were not able yet to be promoted so. So for example there level there were there were fif- 20 22 or 23 students who had passed that were in already showing at Charles.
Okay so maybe I'm trying to make this add up and foot you know cuz that's the accountant in me and to be to be total and that's not what this should be maybe you're showing me um that first column the total number of students you're showing me how many took that were leveled out for each school by grade.
Yes ma'am the total students and then by level one. Yes, ma'am, the total students, and then by Level 1, 2, 3, 4 and 5, how those students scored on the ISIP. And as an example, Charles had 13 Level 1 for June, and then 7 Level 1 in July. So that numbers a lot, whereas they had no, there were 7 Level 3s, 7 Level 4s, 8 Level 5s. Again, that's 22, 3 students right there that weren't there in July because they've already, you know, they don't, they're not required to get that good cause because they've...
So you know what I think would have been, would have helped to make this comparison, and for us to see if you, if you, if the KPI, if you had shown what it was prior? Because how would you know that they made the jump, right? They had to have a pre, a prior ISIP score, right? So I think that's what's throwing off this comparison here.
Yes, ma'am. Be happy to provide.
For me. Right, so had they, had they?
They're adding also.
Right, those are added up, and so if they're here, if we're saying they made a Level, seven of them made a Level 4, and you were saying they had to make a 5-point or greater scale score, we need to, we either need to know like where they were before, and how they would have moved, or had to, we would have had to know what their scale ISIP score was prior to June, because you're making that comparison.
Or, what did you use in here? I don't think they used these 3, 4 and 5s, I think they were just using the Level 1s.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I was just, I was just really just trying to see like how we, how, how we were measuring out, and I'm not, I'm not really following it, following that one there, but, so we can, we can take that one offline. And then I think we got my, my colleagues got the crop ones for me, the same ones that I had for crop, they were responded, but the, the survey from the admins, I kind of, and the, from the teachers and the admins, we didn't have a real good response from that. When I looked at 32, I was wondering, okay, so was it everyone who, like just at the school, since we had cluster sites, is that, was that the intention, or did you all, were you intended to just survey everyone?
For the teachers, it was sent to every teacher that was hired for summer school. So we had a total of 140 ESY teachers that that survey was provided to, and as you see, we had a response from 53 of those teachers. And then the same thing for administrators, it was sent to all administrators, principals and assistant principals, so we had a total of 89, and we had a response rate of 32. And reminders were sent out to those individuals as well to complete the surveys, but that is the data that we received back.
Oh, you want to mute me? Ms. Playback, Ms. Playback going to have us, have them coming at us with the pitchforks and saying, hold on to the paycheck until they do the, do the survey. So at my job, before I quit working, actually, there was a survey that we got, and you didn't get your bonus till you got your, did the survey, so you, so tying money to something does, does, does work. But I, I guess for me, I, the 15 days, I was wondering about having like a longer ESY, but I'm, I'm sure, I heard Dr. Patton told me about getting people to work to do it, but I'm thinking if we are, we, we're kind of updating our practice and look, and I want to go back to the attendance. So I didn't get the teacher attendance in, in any of the data.
Yes, I reached out to Mr. Shonce Friedman, so I will be getting that data from him for teachers.
Do you all know if, was it, was the teacher attendance good?
I don't have that. I'm sorry, I don't have that exact number at this time, so that's why I did reach out to him to try to get that information.
Because that's important. Not just the student, student attendance, the teacher attendance.
We didn't have the number, we also didn't hear from the principals or AP that it was an issue, because if it's an issue, you'd have heard about it on the spot.
You would?
No, they, they'd tell you, otherwise it's defeating their purpose of having the kids. But again, the reason for the questions and why we're going through these so thoroughly with you is that it'll help us for the future, make sure we track any and all these concerns and questions.
Thank you for that reminder also, Dr. Patton, but as we visited school sites during ESY, there was no conversation from administrators and/or teachers about the lack of absences from teachers, or the need to cover classes, or different things like that.
Okay. So Slide 24, I won't ask it, I forgot to ask it in executive session about provide clear safety and security training for all staff as a recommendation for improvement, that was something I'll have to get with you guys about. And the...
Ms. Certain, if I may, speak to that just for a moment. I think my, our belief where that came from is, remember, we had a number of cluster sites, so we had teachers at schools that they would not be familiar with. Yeah, and I think that's a clear recommendation to us, that should we continue with, with cluster sites, we need to make sure that we're providing that information to folks who are not familiar with the campus.
It does make sense, yeah, that's a good one. And I did like the, they say consider alternate calendar options, building in Juneteenth flexibility with makeup days. I mean, it is only 15 days, I guess, I'm not sure how you all did that, but I thought that was good, and, and Dr. Patton has already said she's working, using the feedback for, to guide the 26, and rotating cluster sites. So I guess...
And we couldn't put our hands on any other past surveys in the summer school, so whether it's a perfect or not, at least we have a lot of information to move forward with, you know?
So, and the reason we did cluster sites this year was to help our bottom line, correct? Was to be more efficient?
We actually, for both, for both the credit retrieval programs and then the face-to-face brick-and-mortar programs, we ended up needing fewer instructors.
Right, but having them cluster, I, I do like, that makes sense, when I...
And the other thing they did very, very well, where we just let it go in the past, to my understanding, is like if you had just six kids in a class, you could, you retained that class. We made sure that those classes were full, just like the 10th day, we did it on day 2. If you did not have a full class, we combined them so that we weren't just spending money without having full classes, which was a little shock to people, but kids generate dollars and that generates income.
And but, and if you only have six in there, you still got the same expenses.
And that was the problem, that when you headed across the schools here, then you're going to send kids home, or every single class is going to have potentially three different grade levels, or, and even the K1, or, I'm sorry, 1, 2 and 3, and that was not the intention.
So those are all mine, thank you, Ms. McLoney. I want to circle back, I'm not sure if Dr. Rockwell and Mr. Vu had anything else in here in the discussion in the room, if you had anything before we moved on. So since that...
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, well, we will wrap that up, and then, so thank you, staff, for that.
Yes, Ms. McLoney was thrilled to have had the opportunity to head this up, but she did a really good job. It's a lot of different moving parts, as she's learned, but again, part of our goal, my goal is to get things in standard operating procedures, so down the road, we don't have something like this happen again. It's very, very frustrating to move forward when you can't see where you're at.
Agreed, okay. So the next thing we have on our agenda is the Newberry Elementary School Charter. And I had this, I asked that we have this so that we could have a discussion as a group, because we really haven't had that chance to do that in this type of setting. And so everybody kind of knows, I'm not sure, Ms. Playback, you know kind of what we are with the conversion charter and all that's happened, you know, the...
You told, you told me what happened when you went to the last meeting with them, so that's where I am.
Okay, so we got, we, we've had like two prior meetings after the vote, one where the charter, the charter group, I'm going to say the Charter Review Committee, I think is what it's named, Charter School Review Committee, CSR, something like that, they, the group submitted their application to them instead of the district to be, to get authorized. Our contention is that the vote didn't pass, it didn't meet the threshold that we all followed, agreed to. And then we had the appeal in Tallahassee a couple of weeks ago. And so now we're here, and I, and Mr. Delaney is here, I wanted to really know like if they're, I'm, I'm, I am like the fighter, so I'm the fighter, you know, I'm, that's a public asset, it was an asset that was purchased with taxpayer dollars from the community. I don't know how much PICO money back then, the state used to give money, you know, but the, that is an, an asset, and it provides schooling in a rural area. It's different from the schools here in town, in the sense, I mean, I went back, actually saw like a memo from how they, why they built Newberry out there, the elementary school. And so I feel, have really strong feelings about that school staying under district control, because what I, what I see happening, it was a fear earlier, but what I see happening are the citizens that live in the incorporated area of Newberry, I see a couple of things happening, are going to be paying twice for school, school taxes, because their city government has pledged, has said they will be the financial backstop, they said it in their application, that they submitted to the charter review, they said it in, at the hearing in Orlando, they said it at the appeal. And they, in the previous meeting, they pledged $2 million loan, voted on it to loan them the school. And so the reason I say that they'll pay twice, citizens in incorporated area of Newberry will pay school taxes twice, is because they're now going to have to cover any finances and in-kind services to the school via taxes and fees that are only paid by citizens that live in the incorporated area. They also will have to pay the required local effort and the school taxes, because that's how we get funded, the district. And that charter, even though it's a conversion charter, is still participating in the Florida Education Finance Program, they'll get their money based on enrollment, the way all schools are. And the other reason, other concern that I have is, it was said that they only want a school for children that live in the city of Newberry, and that is not how public schools are organized in Florida. We have a district, in our state constitution, it says, school districts have the same boundaries that counties have. And our schools are, that's how they're funded, and they participate in FFP, that is all in the state constitution. And so, yes, the statute does say you can convert a charter, and in the past, it was usually because it was either low enrollment or low performance or something, but they really took a A school and just kind of broke it up. And I'm not one to just like roll over and want it to go, but I'm just one vote, I'm just one member of this illustrious body, so.
What is Mr. Delaney?
I wanted to know what our path forward is, and so Mr. Delaney is going to share with us, if we have a path forward, possible options. And to my colleagues that are online, if you all have something, like raise your hand, and Ms. Green is going to help me like monitor, okay? So if you all have questions or something, when, after Mr. Delaney speaks, let me know, okay?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So the Charter School Appeal Committee held a four-hour-plus hearing in August, and they ultimately made a recommendation to the State Board of Education that the school district's appeal be denied, and therefore the charter be approved. That meeting is scheduled, where the State Board of Education is going to take up that issue, is scheduled for September 24 in Fort Walton Beach. So in, in one sense, it would be premature for the board to map out exactly what path forward it wants to take, until the State Board of Education has ruled or made its final decision. But just talking broadly, there are not any more administrative appeals after the State Board of Education, and instead, the, any possible legal avenue at that point would involve litigation.
Either one of them online have anything? Any questions for...
So, Mr. Delaney, what I think I'm hearing you say is that there's no more regular appeals, so the only other thing they could do is literally sue the state.
Yes, ma'am, there would be...
So that's, I just want to be that clear to everybody, that I'm a very direct kind of a person, and that, that's, when I talked with Mr. Delaney, I'm like, wow.
There, there was a document, I gave Dr. Patton a copy of the, I think it was like six issues that we had to, that were discussed in the appeal, and we grappled, or they grappled with the, did the vote meet the threshold, they acknowledged the conflict between the administrative rule and the statute. And I thought it real interesting that they put the onus and tried, tried to shift the onus on to the district to, that we should have held another vote or something like that, it was like, anyway, that rule is, and our attorney, what was his name?
Terry Harmon.
Terry Harmon, said to them that this wasn't, we were not the first district that has had a vote, that there have been other districts that have followed that administrative rule in this type of thing before now. I think it's maybe 2019 or something, I think the last time that administrative rule had been revised, so it has, it's been in place, but I think probably of all the issues, the, whether or not the vote met the threshold is where we spent, where they spent the most time grappling with, probably an hour, I had to go and like find some quarters to put in the meter, because I didn't, you know, I didn't know what to expect, we got there, we put, I had some change, and I put two and a half hours on, I think, two hours on, and, and that was like an hour and 40 minutes on that one thing, between the questions of, and discussion amongst themselves. Also, the other thing I want to let y'all know, so I thought it was really interesting that the challenges that were pointed out with them serving ESE students in the application, and from Mr. Harmon and myself, they sat there and they told them, it was, it was okay if they couldn't serve the ESE students, that they're part of a local education, LEA, and that the district is the backstop, and they could send the ESE students back to us. They actually said that.
The state?
Yes, the, not the state, the, their appointees, yeah, the folks who are acting on behalf of the state. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Rockwell.
So my question is for Mr. Delaney, I know that you said that, you know, if this, if the Board of Education does approve the charter, the only possible next step would be a lawsuit, but what would the lawsuit be? Like what would we be, what would we be asserting in a lawsuit? Or are there multiple options for what that lawsuit could look like?
There are multiple options, and I, I would hesitate to dig too deep into legal strategy in a public meeting, and also before the Board of Education has made its final decision, so I, I would recommend some caution there, but there are always considerations about federal law versus state law, and venue, state court versus federal court and so forth. But I...
Okay, but there's, I guess, I mean, just knowing that there's more than one avenue is sufficient for now, I realize that legal strategy would have to be in a closed session, so.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Does Mr. Vu have anything? He didn't have anything, okay. All right, you have, anybody else have any, any questions or any?
I think we have to leave.
Yeah.
I just have a few things, just same thing, oh, sorry, yeah.
Go ahead.
Just echoing what's already been stated, I feel very similar to Ms. Certain, you know, about being a fighter, especially about a public assets that's been taken away from the community, in a way, and that is now not going to serve students as was promised to the community when this vote happened, and so even in light of just all of that, the rules that were being governed at the time for the vote, and the fact that the only folks with any authority to truly say whether or not, who won this vote, that has said anything, has been us. whether or not, who won this vote, that has said anything, has been us. Still pointing out that the Secretary of State hasn't said anything, um, for what up. And again, yeah, so not much to say on that, but yes.
I don't, I don't think the Secretary of State would weigh in, because it's not like a vote that was held up under their jurisdiction, like the only reason why Supervisor of Elections participated is because she was the, the independent arbiter that each of us, the district agreed upon, as well as the city, the, I keep saying the city of Newberry, because it really was a municipal charter conversion, but anyway, that's, but, and the, the Newberry First or whatever their group is, we had to agree upon an arbitrator, and, and then she helped with the balloting, producing the ballots and all of that, but this, it wasn't like an election per se that falls up under the Secretary of State's purview. So that's why he's been, um, Mr. Burr's been quiet. It's not as, yeah, it's not, it's not under his purview, so...
Heard, heard.
Yeah. Well, we've had our conversation, we can't talk, you know, about each other, but if, we're just kind of like spinning our wheels with that one, I guess, but, so thank you, Mr. Attorney Delaney, for that. Um, if nobody has anything else, any other requests or anything, we are adjourned at four fourteen. Thank you all. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
All right.